We call us to order at six o'clock. We have a forum. Logan, will you say a prayer?
Dear Lord, we just thank you for today. Thank you for the opportunity to get together. Pray that we make the best decisions for the district, for our students and our staff. We should ask for rain for our country.
Unite with rain. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its representative religious fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one individual.
Thank you, sir. Okay, for our open forum, Mr. Ross.
I just, sometimes desperate times call for desperate measures, I guess. There was something that happened to me Friday last week. I was at a church garage sale with my family and some other folks. And somebody came up to me and asked me and said, "Hey, I heard you're getting a new maintenance director." He knew I worked at the school, didn't necessarily know my position. And I was like, "Oh, that's interesting," because, you know, that's my job. And he was like, "Oh, I don't know. There was just somebody saying that they're going to be the new maintenance director." And I said, "Okay," you know, pretty embarrassed in front of my family and everybody else, but moved on. Monday, came, went to the super's office, met with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, and I just told them what I just told you. And I was like, "Hey, what's the deal?" And they said, "Well, we are sorry that you heard that way, but that is true, that you're being replaced." And I said, "Okay." And we had a conversation for a few minutes. And I'm not here. I'll be honest with you. I'm not here. I will not get on my knees and beg for a job to anybody on this planet. I'm not here to try and save my job. That's fine, I'll go. But my one thing on my way out would be, though, you just can't treat people that way. Like, it's not ethical, you know? I mean, I understand rearranging, reassigning. I understand people drop the ball. I've dropped the ball many a times myself. And I understand that, and that's fine, and that takes place. But there's no reason why I should find out at a church garage sale through a third party that I'm getting replaced. And that's my thing. Sanford-Fritch District deserves better leadership than that, in that situation of just, hey! Like, I should probably be at least like the second person to know that I'm getting replaced, or at least be corrected, that I could try to fix it. And again, I'm not trying to get anybody in trouble. I'm just saying, you just can't treat people like that and expect to have a great working environment for the employees. You're just not going to get both. You don't get to eat your cake and have your cake and eat it too. You just don't. But the other thing, before I'm finished, is just that, you know, when it comes to the grass of the football field, I know that's a thing, and so if there are any questions, I'm used to living in a glass house, so I can answer any questions on my behalf that might help, and if it doesn't, you know, just as a resource to you guys, so thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mark. Okay. We'll move on to new business. And consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or anything? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A motion by Doug, our second. Second. Second by Mike. On favor. On favor, not opposed, motion carries. Okay, on to the regular agenda.
Can you give us just a second?
Okay.
We're learning.
That's no problem.
Sorry. Yep, sorry.
Okay. Let's move on to the compensation plan.
I can. Looking at the compensation plan, there wasn't a whole lot of changes that we made as far as the supplements and stipends. We did add back a girls coordinator, add a $500 stipend. We've had some issues with coaches having CDLs, and so we went ahead and added a CDL stipend of $1,000 to try to encourage them to go ahead and get their CDLs. And so, and really, you know, it's reward for those, the ones that have gone out and done it. Because, you know, I know that is a pain to do that, but other than that, did we change anything else, Richard? I don't think we did.
We changed the summer conditioning back down to the 20 bucks.
Oh, yeah, $20 an hour. For that, but other than that, there's no change there.
Okay.
So, damn, I don't know how it.
On the teachers' pay scale, we've included a, Courtney went out to, nobody's doing the task based survey anymore to tell us what everybody's paying, so we actually had to go out and get the compensation plans from several districts. So Courtney went out and got the compensation plans from several districts, and we put it in the spreadsheet there for y'all to see, to see what we're, how we're paying in comparison to other districts. And if you look, you'll see that we are fairly competitive. Highland Park, I don't understand how they pay what they pay, so we're not competitive with them at all. But if you look at, if you look at just about everybody else, so Borders have us for a few years.
Basically, we're at or above everything but the yellow, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, that's, that tells you the story, right?
Yeah, so there's just a few districts that pay it. Bushland's, you know, a little bit at the start, Gruber the last couple of years, Stratford the last few years, but for the most part, other than Highland Park, like I said, they're, they're the odd man outs. They're paying the same as Amarillo is. So, other than that, we're very competitive. We do think that there's a good possibility that the states will, now that they really have the votes to do. Then, yeah, the vouchers, that we expect them to come back at the next session and do the, you know, they're going to want to do the carrot and the stick at the same time. They're going to want to do the vouchers, and then they'll probably increase staff salaries up there, so that's a definite possibility. So, so in the compensation plan, we didn't show an increase, and I think that's our recommendation, right, is that we stay the same on the teacher pay scale. And then, and see what the state does next year. We are also adding the teacher incentive allotment, though that's not for everybody, so.
So what was the step?
If you look at the pay scale in the file in the compensation plan, it's, you know, it's different for each step.
Right.
It's anywhere from, I don't know, I don't want to just say numbers off the top of my head. Like, here's one that's 800, here's another one that's 800, there's one that's 900.
So there's stepping.
There's one that's 600.
Depending on where you're at in the scale?
Yes, sir.
Of course, the lower the higher the less you get. Is that correct?
I think it varies. Like that, a step from zero to one is almost $900. The step from one to two is right around a little over $500.
Okay. But did they give them, the state give them a step?
The state didn't give anything, because that gal got intermixed in the battle over vouchers. The state basically held that hostage, and then when they didn't get the vouchers, then they, they didn't do any teacher pay raises as well, so. Except, all signs are they will next year, but there's no telling. I did also, on another sheet, I put out there how much it would cost us if you increased the steps by, like you did a $250 increase to the steps, it cost us $16,532,000, $750, $48,000, and $1,000, $65,000. And that's just because we have 65 teachers, so I just literally multiplied the number of teachers by the amount. We anticipate that, so it's about.
Okay. Discussion.
Well, I kind of disagree with, I don't think that's a good time to give something.
Oh, I thought, yeah, I mean, well, that's the state that's not giving anything to them.
I see. We don't know, cost being for having them down anywhere. I feel it. I know everybody else feels it. I think the thing that y'all have been doing. Is there something?
Oh, absolutely.
So you said your recommendation is not anything about at-will. Were y'all going to recommend?
No, he said the state.
No, he said their recommendation.
Well, the, you know, the state gives the step each year, so the teachers are going to get a raise no matter what, and they get that from the state because of the step. And so, our recommendation was, because we feel like the state is going to come in next year and, you know, pony up some money for the teachers, was not to do a local raise. But, I mean, that's up to y'all. I mean, that's why we put that in there, the 250, 500, 70, 750, 1,000. So if y'all want to do it, then you're more than welcome to do it, but, you know, because they're going to get a raise no matter what because of the steps, you know, at-will.
Are they getting a step or they're not getting?
They all.
They all get a step no matter what.
And they've been up on there.
Yeah, they'll get, they move up on the step no matter what, with their years of experience. And so, they'll get that, for sure. And so, it's just whether or not locally, we want to give them, you know, some extra to add on to that.
But they haven't presented the step yet.
No, those are set.
It's just how many years you've been working. You just go down the next one, that's your raise.
Yeah, and the reason we haven't is because we're competitive, because that's, on our recommendations, y'all on whether to do it, the thing we look at is, are we competitive with the people around us? And so, we say, yep, we're competitive with people around us, so that's our recommendation. But if you guys want to give additional, I mean, that's why we haven't, that's why you guys get to make the decision.
Historically, we'd give them, if we're done, we'd let you across. I know at-will don't get steps, but, you know, historically, we've always stopped them here. We've always given them, and they didn't, you know, we've matched the percentage.
Matched the dollars.
That way, everybody, you know, we're showing everybody across the board that they.
Right.
Right, that's why we're, you know, you don't give them anything, you know, that's going to hurt everywhere, all the way down, so I'm with you. They need something.
I think it's good faith, you know, good purpose. I mean, and like Richard said, we're ahead in the step, or we're ahead, you know, we're competitive, and we are telling them, right?
Yeah.
Right.
I'd rather slowly increase or whatever.
We're just now competitive.
Versus having to catch it, versus having to catch it.
Right.
We're just so not competitive, but we've just now, in the last three years, maybe?
Ever since we did that $5,000 raise, that's what made us competitive. And there's a point, a good point to what you're pointing at, we are until we aren't. We have no idea what the other boards around us are going to do. I mean, maybe around us could be giving, you know, $2,000 increases to their pay scale.
At some point in time, everybody's going to get a little nervous and really throw it out there, and I'd like to be that, you know, we're known to take care of them and keep them.
Right.
Maybe not leave for $1,000, you know, too much on the real.
Anybody else?
What are y'all thinking? If you're looking at his schedule, he put out there with that anticipated cost, what it'll cost us, so what are we looking at?
And I didn't go above 1,000, because I figured you guys can multiply out and figure.
Typically, typically, we do the 500. That's on a, that's a typical.
That would put us really close to the starting pay for this one.
Yeah.
Are those percentages lined up with the, with the amounts? 1%, 250?
No, the two don't have any relation to each other. I just did a percentage across on the, so I didn't try to match things up.
Because it's usually been like 3% is what it's averaged out to.
That's for at-will, but.
Right. I was trying to think.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever, whatever we gave is usually equal at 2.
We need to decide now, to get down the road, you know, a little.
About?
Oh, probably 80, around 80.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
At-will employees, 80 to 85.
If we have 65, then probably 50. Yeah, that's probably right about 80.
That would be my, see if I wanted, but that would be my thing there.
That's more than 80. I mean, above and beyond what the step is.
Yeah. I would say 500, but here too, that'd be personal.
That's stepping up.
What about at-will? And then you've got salary position as well, principals, assistant student, curriculum director, assistant business manager, transportation director, maintenance director, athletic director.
To add to that, to at-will, they really get kicked pretty hard, you know, because the teacher knows you got a step plus.
Yeah.
Right.
That's what they'd be for 3.
Oh, 3, and then figuring that off at 80.
80 even, and the 40, just 43, yeah.
So those percentages you have in there, Richard, that at-will, so 3%, that's what you're anticipating it costs.
43,000 and 3%. Yes, sir. We took, we took our sheet that has everybody on in our salary sheets and then just plugged in a 3% raise and saw how much it changed the number, and so that's where we got those numbers. So we, we didn't actually multiply out the number of people. We took actual salaries and figured how much it would be.
That's the total.
Right.
So if we were to do the 3% on the at-will and the salary, and then do the 500 on the teachers, that's 90, almost $94,000 in total change? Yes, sir. Okay, the first question always coming forward.
I have a very, a very shaky feeling on our budget this year, because I just don't know. The early values from our appraisal district were just, you know, they always tell us, don't look at the early values. They, they, they're nothing to look at, but they were just totally, I mean, if you go by the early values, we're losing 100 million, or it probably wasn't that much. It was like $60 million in value, and that's just not happening. And then they said in the letter, they don't look at these values, so I don't have a real good, I don't know how close we'll be. I would, I would say, we're not going to, you know, because we don't have like the track or the, the roof repairs on there this year, so we're not going to be 600,000 in the whole this year. I mean, we're probably going to be 100, maybe 200,000 in the whole. That'll probably include having a bus on the, on the thing. That's just a guess. I'll have a better feel in July, but I just, you know, we don't know how many kids we're going to end up losing. We don't know how many kids we're going to gain if we do that one route. I just, there are just so many variables happening this year that I just don't, this is a very hard year to estimate our revenue.
You're on the road, is he good?
We do 500 more for giving stuff. Does our hit?
I'm personally not going to have 4%, but I know it's a lot of money. Really speaking rough up there right now. I know it's not a time, but better than start speaking out. You know, we can do what we can do. Whatever y'all think.
I don't, we never consider the step in what we can, I mean, that's, that's, we have no power over that. We just, we always just look at what we want. And to me, if you're looking at the 43 for the 3%, and say there's 80, that's about 500. You know, I mean, it's, and the other is 500. I mean, it's, to me, that one's closer comparable.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're a teacher, you get a step from the state, that's, that's just part of it.
Right, and whatever that step.
Yeah, and some are little, some are big. I mean, that's just, you know, you stay and teach it and go to college, and that's, that's just part of it.
Right.
I like the 3 and the 5, I feel that, it's not 4.
I mean, on $50,000 salary, it's a $500 difference. Between 3 and 4.
So the plan you've got out there is with, with nothing, so if we do a percent, we just all agree with that, with the changes.
Yeah, with, either with changes, with compensation.
But we don't have to do, so if we want to do admin at 3 and the at-will at 4, or whatever, you know, we can always, those are just numbers, and then do the 5 for the teachers. We can do any kind of mix like that.
Right.
Do we have to have a compensation plan? For tonight?
No.
Do we have to have it approved tonight?
If, if we don't, it makes it hard for us to get the, all the figures in and done in time and payroll. That's why we always try to do it.
There's got to be some kind of forgiveness there, with everything we can give them.
Something, they're, they're all good.
Right.
Above and beyond.
I'd say 4% to 500.
Anybody else?
4% for at-will and salary? So that's more about 130?
About 114,000. You ever take a little back? Never take a little back.
We got a couple of, you know, from admin that won't be there. I mean, we've got some to add and some to subtract, but some of those won't be getting salary increases. So who do we have that'll get them? Will sleep get one? And then, we can get.
Well, the only one that wouldn't would be the high school principal because he's, hasn't started yet.
The counselor.
The counselors and then the, or two of the counselors. And then the assistant principal at the elementary.
And the assistant principal at the high school.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So you only got like four or five?
That's why the amount is.
I mean, I'm good with it. Is there anybody that doesn't want it?
Don't like it.
So four percent for both and then five hundred for the teachers?
Yes, sir.
As amended would be doing.
As amended, there you go.
Okay.
So whoever does that say as amended.
Okay, for the, do we have a motion for the compensation plan?
I move to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five compensation plan that has amended.
Got a motion by Chad, do a second.
Second.
Second by Stacy. All in favor? All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. All right, so, uh, budget amendment, Mr. Hein. Courtney Johnson, Courtney to do it.
Ah, it's okay, I can do this.
Wait a minute, I didn't see this.
Uh, most of them are items that we have discussed previously, and I just, um, we did, uh, the ones that's on there, the twenty-one thousand for sod on the football field, um, that was the sod we put down the center of the football field. Um, we just, we did that because time was of the essence. Uh, then on the fifty-one, I need to add, you know, we talked about the insurance going up, I needed to do a budget amendment to cover that increase. And then we, you guys approved, uh, roof repairs last meeting, and I forgot to put a budget amendment with those roof repairs, so that's what that amendment's for. So two hundred and forty thousand to fifty-one and twenty-one thousand to thirty-six.
Okay, any questions?
So is that after we figure out that the sides are terrible on field, or is that part of that? Or is that two exits to work for to play on?
That's the center sod, and it's grown in really good. It looks pretty good. Um, there are still some voids on the sides, but for the most part, it is much better than what we, we talked about. It'll, it'll be a playable field. And that sod did grow in well. Um, you can, it's very hard to tell where the sod was and where the, the other grass, you know, where it started and stopped. I mean, I took a picture of it, and I've been showing it to people going, okay, you can't even really tell now, so it's, it's blended in quite well.
Are we gonna have them kind of try and fix the voids and the other parts?
I asked the turf, uh, our turf management person about the sod in those, and he said seeding those would be sufficient, and you can already see runners in there, so I do believe grass is growing there.
Where the sand was, did we take the sand out?
The, the sand is primarily was in the middle, that's where we did the sod mostly. So.
Oh, it's in a lot better shape than that than it was when we started football safety last year, so.
Yeah, it's in much better shape than it was last year. It, it's actually not. It's playable.
I just thought if that did well, maybe we could have a little.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion for the budget amendment?
I move to approve the budget amendment.
Okay, by Doug, do a second. Second by Mike, all in favor? All in favor, motion carries. All right. Mr. Hein, you wanna do this or will let Courtney do it?
To, oh, we can, I report?
Yes, you report.
Sorry.
You're good.
I was thinking, even though she's not here, I was looking at Kim and just going, yeah, Kim's gonna do it next. Uh, we did have our bond meeting with the architect. Um, it was a pretty productive meeting, I think. Uh, so the, the timelines that we discussed, the, the very next thing that we need to get done is the contract with the architect. Um, if you guys that were here in two thousand fourteen remember, the contract timeframe is, um, one of the things that delays the process the most is because when we send it to our lawyers, um, it's, the, the back and forth process can, can take some time, so that's something that we need to get done as soon as we can. He's gonna give us a copy of, he's gonna go to and get the two thousand fourteen contract that we had with him, update it for the current changes in the law, and then he'll send it to us, we'll send it to Walsh and see what they say. Um, so that, that's where we are. That would be the, the first thing on the timeline. Uh, the next thing that we're gonna have to do is decide a delivery method, so the next meeting we'll probably go over the various delivery methods. I'm really am in favor of us doing the contract manager at risk. The contract manager at risk lets us not have like any cost overruns get eaten by the, the contract manager, not by the school district. However, the fees are higher in the contract manager at risk. The architect was kind of wanting us, he talked about on some of the other schools, just doing contract management, um, but then that means that we have to go out for bids on every subcontractor, and we have to do all the work, and we're not construction specialists, so we'll go over in detail what we, what the various methods are next time, but, um, that's, that's probably the next big decision that we're gonna have to make. And so we'll make that at the, at the next meeting. Uh, we did, so we talked about some specifics, uh, going over the items. Uh, one of the things that had been asked of me when I talked, um, when we, before the bond went to the election, I went and met with the band directors and the, uh, the band boosters. And one of the items that they requested is, if you've been in the band hall, you know that big window that goes into the band hall from the, uh, band director's office? They asked, could we take that out and put a door in that place? So we asked the architect, hey, will that fit within the, the budget? And, um, he said, he'd have to look at it, but he, uh, he's gonna look at it and see, and he's like, if it's not load bearing and since it's got a real big window there, probably not, but he didn't think it was gonna, that would be that big of an issue. Um, we also talked about the flooring in the band hall. Uh, when I had talked to the band directors, they didn't have a strong feeling either way, so he is recommending that we do a vinyl plank, um, that it's the most, uh, it's sound bedding, because right now we just have BCT tile in there, and it is very active, sound bounces off that a lot, and it'll improve the band hall significantly if we replace that with BCT tiles, or, I mean, oh, replace that with the vinyl planks instead. We did talk about carpet a little bit, but then he talked about spit coming out of the stuff, and it's a bad idea, and so, so that's where he recommended the, the tiles. Uh, we also talked about the playgrounds. Um, he is suggesting that we don't do the playgrounds in the, the package that we give to the contract manager, um, that we do those separately and just, uh, and procure those services through buy board, uh, of someone coming in and, and doing the playgrounds. Um, because he said it's, you will get turnkey service, um, from one of these playground companies, and if we include it in the contract manager's package, then we're just adding their fee so that they can watch the playground company do the work. So, um, that's, that's probably a good suggestion. He also, I mean, one of the reasons why I was wanting us to, which I don't want to discuss it tonight, we, you know, we've asked to put this decision off till we get to more information at the next meeting, but one of the reasons he was wanting to know whether or not we're doing turf is because then you can hire the same company doing the turf field to do the playgrounds. And so that's one of the reasons why we needed to have a decision, so that we can plan which way we're gonna go, because it'll cost more if we have to bring something in separately. Um, not substantially, though. On the champs demo, he also suggested that we do this separately. Um, we do have one company that is, uh, that is gonna give us a bid to do it and see, um, what the cost is from them separately. Uh, because once again, he's like, if we can get a company just come in and do that, why pay your construction manager at risk to oversee the thing if it's, it's just tearing down a building and, and you're gonna have to hire us, an independent company to do the abatement anyway? So the architect has suggested we, we do that as a separate project. Um, while we were talking, it occurred to me, and this is something we want to talk about later, because I don't have any details for you guys at all. We did mention it to the architect, and he's like, yeah, that's a great idea, I wish we had thought of that before the bond, and I wish we had to. Um, champs, uh, instead of doing the survey of what the town, what to do, what if we built teacher housing instead on that land? Um, it's something to consider. Uh, but I've got a lot more work to do before I can come back and talk to you all about that. So it's something I want to put the, the germ of it in your minds, but then we'll, uh, we'll come back and talk to you about what we can do on that. The track, um, as you, if you've been out there, you've seen the surface is gone. Um, if you've walked the track, you can see where they marked it all up, where all the slopes and the, especially like that, on the, there's a straightaway, there's a part where the asphalt is obviously worn completely through on the round curve in the back, it's pretty bad. Um, it is, so they aren't willing to put a surface on that asphalt, so it is as we anticipated, they, the asphalt will have to be replaced. A, uh, geotech engineer, we hired a geotech engineer to come in and do boarings on all of the, uh, or all the way around. He did six separate boarings on that to see, you know, how much, uh, asphalt is there, what the sub base underneath it is, uh, is like and stuff. Uh, we have got the, the geotech's report back, the, there's actually three inches of asphalt, which really surprised us. We thought that the last company had shorted us on asphalt, but it is three inches, which is what they, is the standard for tracks. However, the sub base underneath the asphalt was not compacted. So it was just dumped in there and then put asphalt on, on top of it. So the geotech engineers is, uh, recommending that we, we go to a depth of three feet pulling out the base and then put it back in, compacting it in, in layers so that we can get the required compaction level and then do the asphalt on top. How much of that, of our contingency pays for, I do not have that figured yet. So that's another piece of information we want to wait on to, before we discuss all the other stuff, is just to see how that affects our, our programs, our plans. And then on my finance report, it's self, uh, the only thing I was gonna call out is, if you'll notice on the graphs, it really looks like we received a lot of money last year as opposed to this year, and I may have mentioned this before, but it just jumped out at me today, um, on our finance, on the financial summary. The last year's, how much we've received figures are so much higher just because of that money that the state paid us back for the, uh, that seven hundred thousand that we got back for the winter start, the early stuff. And then on the expenditure side this year, it's because we still haven't paid for any of the track or the, uh, or the roofing repairs yet. We have got the insurance payment for the roofing repairs, um, which they, they paid us the, there's, so they paid us six hundred and forty-seven thousand, there's another hundred thousand we'll get back, I think afterwards, the, what do they call it? The, where it's, the age of it, the depreciation amount, they'll give us that after we've repaired it, so. I'm sorry, what?
What was the insurance this year? It went up, right?
Yeah, it was like two forty or.
Maybe it was paid how much?
Uh, six hundred and forty-eight, and then they'll give us a hundred and some thousands once it's all, all done. Yeah. The, uh, once again, they, they've paid us out far more than we've ever paid in, so we're probably a bad client for that to have. So, and I think that's all I have for you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Garrison.
All right, I didn't put anything in my actual report, I just have a couple of things. Uh, I sent out an email to you, uh, I believe it was the beginning of last week, the end of the previous week. Y'all are required, which is crazy, you're required to do cybersecurity training, so we have a virtual, uh, training that I sent to you. Um, I believe it probably went to your spam account. Um, it should be, is it vector?
Vector.
Vector training, or I think it's even come up with Safe Schools. So if you'll check and let me know if you didn't get it, then I can resend it and, uh, get it to you, but you'll, you'll need to complete that. It's just, uh, some videos to watch, basically answer a couple of questions, I believe. And then, uh, we did get star scores in, uh, the, the admin team, uh, some of them were gone to a training this week, but they are working on that, and we've gotten the teachers to look at that. We are doing summer school at the high school for the ones that didn't pass that need to take it in the summer, but, uh, we're very pleased, uh, with most of the scores. We've still got some work to do, we're gonna continue to do it, but, um, we're getting there, and so, uh, um, but, and we'll share those with you. Uh, Kim's still breaking the, all that down, and, and so we'll share that with you, but, uh, uh, we've been working hard trying to get people hired and that type of deal, and, uh, going to some trainings, and, and, uh, so far it's been a good start to the summer, so. That's all I got.
All right. Uh, let's set the next board meeting for July. So, y'all wanna do the tenth or the seventeenth? Or we can even do a mind beer, whatever y'all wanna do.
Yeah, I think we're all ready now.
Yeah. Well, we'll just leave it on Wednesday then. Say, I'll do tenth or seventeenth?
Seventeenth would be better.
Okay. What about y'all? Everybody good with seventeenth? Rest of you? All y'all? Okay. We'll do that then. Okay. All right, Mr. Hein, would you call us into closed session to discuss personnel or hear complaints against certain personnel, public officers? Texas Governmental Code five five one point oh seven one, discussion regarding open teaching positions at six forty-five. 551.071, discussion regarding open teaching positions at 6:45.
All right, Mr. Garrett.
All right, I recommend Tyler Brassfield, Callie Garzon, Zach Jewitt, and Elizabeth Winx for a 2024-2025 probationary contract for certified classroom teacher subject to salary and assignment.
A recommendation by Jason, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve (laugh) that's (inaudible). I forgot how you say that.
That's present.
Present.
Have a motion by Stacy Jewitt, second.
Second.
Second by Mike.
What was that, Mike? Say you, Mike.
Okay. All in favor? All in favor, not opposed, motion carries.
All right, I recommend Gage Cassidy, Lucky Hughes, and Jason Jocelyn for a 2024-2025 probationary dual assignment contract for certified classroom teacher slash coach subject to salary and assignment.
Have recommendation by Jason, do I have a motion?
I make the motion to approve Gage Cassidy, Lucky Hughes, and Jason Jocelyn for a 2024-2025 probationary dual assignment contract for certified classroom teacher slash coach subject to salary and assignment.
Motion by Doug, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Logan. All in favor? All in favor, not opposed, motion carries.
All right, I recommend Mary Beth Jones and Lauren Jocelyn for a 2025-2024-2025 probationary contract for certified counselor subject to salary and assignment.
Recommendation by Jason, do I have a motion?
Make motion to approve Mary Beth Jones, Lauren Jocelyn for a 2024-2025 probationary contract for certified counselor subject to salary and assignment.
Motion by Rusty, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. All in favor? All in favor, not opposed, motion carries.
All right, I recommend LaCarisha Rankin for a 2024-2025 probationary contract for certified administrator subject to salary and assignment.
Recommendation by Jason, do I have a motion?
I make the motion to approve Acritia Rankin for a 2024-2025 probationary contract for certified administrator subject to salary and assignment.
Motion by Chad, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stacy. All in favor? All in favor, not opposed, motion carries.
Hey, I didn't forget one thing in my report. I'm, uh, I didn't know if y'all saw it or not, we posted on Facebook, but Mrs. Carr was named middle school principal of the year for Region 16, so, uh, well deserving, she does a great job, so I just wanted to give her a shout out on that as well.
Absolutely. All right. Anything else? All right. I make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, all in favor?
Yes.
All in favor, not opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned at 7:16.